In here. Very good. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome, welcome. We're gonna get started in just a minute. I'm just gonna have a sip of H two O here and get rolling. So if you are here for elevate your consulting practice, education and training as a pathway to certification, certification and excellence, you are in the right place because that's what we are going to talk about. My name is Rich Cruz. I am the Chair of the CMC Committee. Our committee is all about making sure that you as consultants know and understand the what the CMC certification is. And what IFC USA as a certifying body has to offer to the consulting profession. I myself am a consultant. I have Greater Chicago Consulting and Work Balance Consulting. Greater Chicago Consulting mainly focuses on marketing and work balance mainly focuses on OD organizational development, change management. And I'm joined here with other members of IFC USA. I'd like to introduce Pam Bastian, who is moderating our, our, our discussion here. Pam is a staff member of IFC USA. Hey Pam.
Hi, pleasure to be here again today. Nice to see you all, full house.
It is, it is growing, which is great. We had a little more than a hundred people sign up for this, so that thank you all very much for your interest. Other members that I can point out here that I see, we've got David Norman, who's our liaison between the CMC Committee and, and the Board of Directors for IFC USA. We also have Gregory Lundie, who's here, who is the Chairperson of the, the CMC Certification Committee. Is that right Greg? Did I get that right?
Yeah, certification and recertification.
And recertification, perfect. And I just recertified recently, so very, very happy to have done that and be part of this organization. We also have Margie Hanson. Hey Margie. Margie is the Chair of our Marketing Committee. Now, and so thank you very much, Margie, for getting the word out there and, and helping us to get everybody in this room. And I also want to thank the staff of IFC USA for sending the emails and helping to facilitate the, the communication for this, for this event. So I am going to give a little bit of a presentation. So I will have a slide deck that I'm going to show everybody. But really what we want to do, want to make this less of a presentation and more of a discussion. So if you don't mind, just a few couple of housekeeping things, if we can just keep the mute button on until you are talking. It just helps to keep the background noise down. When you're ready and you have any kind of question, you'll find on the bottom and some, some people's toolbars may be a little different, but you might see the reactions button at the bottom there. If you click that, you'll see the raise hand feature, that raised hand feature will signify it for us that you're, you have something to say. Otherwise, wave your hands or something to get our attention. We'll, we'll make sure you get out of the floor. So with that, I'm gonna just share my screen here. There we go. All right. So again, today's topic of discussion is elevate your consulting practice, education and training as a pathway to certification excellence. And the CMC Committee worked on this. Because in today's competitive consulting landscape, standing up in the crowd is essential. This presentation will explore how education, training and certification through IFC USA can equip you with the knowledge, skills and credibility to achieve consulting excellence. We're going to delve into our programs, are all of our different education programs and how they pave the way for earning the prestigious Certified Management Consultant Designation CMC. And we hope that you're ready to unlock your full potential and gain a leading edge in the consulting field. Now, a little about myself. I did, I kind of introduced myself a little bit there, but this is actually the, the reason why we put this presentation together is this is actually my pathway to certification. I found IFC USA as a membership body, but then I, I knew that they had education resources and I went through the Quick Start Program, which I felt was invaluable to me. So I'm gonna, we're gonna definitely talk about some of the, some of the other programs that we have here. But that really whet my appetite for making sure that I wanted to get that CMC. I wanted to show my, you know, that, that I actually went and learned that I wanted to be an ethical, competent consultant and it's, it's, these are resources that I carry with me pretty much every week. So to just talk about our agenda. We're, we're going to talk a little bit about what IFC USA is, our, our relation to the CMC Global Institute or ICMCI. And then a little bit about the CMC credential. We're going to talk about building a strong foundation, a little bit about the CMC itself and how you're going to gain a competitive edge and our educational services in the end. So IFC USA and ICMCI. So ICMCI is, well, IFC USA is one of forty nine member countries in ICMCI. So ICMCI is now also known as the CMC Global Institute. And this is the, this is the world body of, of consultants, right? So it's the international body. Our purpose here of IFC, at IFC USA is to promote excellence and ethics in management consulting through certification, education and professional resources. So ICMCI owns the certification and consulting competence framework. So everything that we do is reviewed triannually from, in, in the States, it's reviewed by ICMCI, CMC Global Institute. And we get all of what we do here, straight from the top on the, on the global platform. And David, if I'm missing anything, feel free to, feel free to jump in. You too, Greg. So IFC USA offers a robust suite of education programs designed to empower consultants at different stages of their career. So first, we have the Quick Start Program and Quick Start is, again, this is how I first became involved with IFC USA. So it's a comprehensive online course that provides a, a fun foundational understanding of management consulting principles. It covers the core competencies, ethical guidelines and the consulting lifecycle. The, and I'm just going to tell you, like I, the resources that you get from here, you can use over and over again in your practice. Because they are, they're, it's, it's just a really great framework. Plus, if you get into the live sessions like I did, you can actually become part of a cohort where you meet and everybody's learning together. It's just a very valuable experience. I highly recommend it. The other program that we have here is Mastering Management Consulting or MMC. It's a more in-depth program that's designed to hone your consulting skills and knowledge, and it develops expertise in areas like problem solving, client engagement and project management. And I personally have not gone through this program, though it is on my agenda as part of my professional development. And it's, if David correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, this really comes from some master level curriculum development. So it's, it's, it's a very robust program. We also have ISO twenty seven hundred. So the ISO, it's not a certification. I should, I need to, I need to redact that. It is not a certification. ISO twenty seven hundred is a designation of, to the, to a framework for how you conduct your consultancy. And it's, it is for the, the quality of the type of services that you are providing. It equips you with the understanding of the best practices for managing your consulting services and demonstrates your commitment to quality and client satisfaction. It's a very, very detailed and helpful instrument is a checklist that puts you on the same level as your clients so that you, everybody understands what that contract is going to be in the end, if that makes sense.
Rich, if I might, it, it is based on an ISO, a, an international standard. So the significance of the ISO twenty seven hundred is you're at the same level as other folks worldwide. And it's, it's valuable to get it. And the, the words is you're trained in ISO seven hundred and you're trained in the use of the checklist. Just as a side note, I wish I'd had it decades ago.
Yeah, it was, it was first introduced to me through the, our Canada constituent, and now we offer it in the States as well. So that's very exciting. So earning the Certified Management Consultant or CMC designation signifies the pinnacle of achievement in the consulting profession. This globally recognized credential validates your expertise, experience and a commitment to ethical practice. The CMC designation opens doors to new opportunities, allows you to command premium fees and attract top tier clients. So by achieving CMC status, you position yourself as a leader in the field and a trusted advisor to clients seeking the best possible consulting solutions. So it is a global credential. It is when you earn it here, you earn it. So that if you're doing, if you're doing business internationally, it is recognizable worldwide. And is, it is a very robust sequence of, how do I put this? The, the, the process, right, is a very robust process that's valid and reliable using assessments, including a, a testing phase and a, an interview phase before a board. So it, it's not for the faint of heart, but boy, you, you really feel like you've, you've earned it, you know, in the end, which is great. And again, it, it does help to position you as a trusted advisor to your clients. I know my, my clients appreciate that I maintain my CMC certification. And when I talk to other consultants that have the same, they share the same types of stories. So all of this, you know, in today's consulting market, which, you know, everybody kind of says I'm a consultant, you know, right? And so there's, there's, there's a lot of that in, in, in this marketplace today. And education certification really are essential for standing out from the competition. So earning the CMC designation equips you to the knowledge, skills and credibility to become a top performer. And the clients really recognize the value proposition working with a CMC credentialed consultant. By investing in your professional development through IFC, you can gain a significant competitive edge that will propel your consulting career to new heights. Now, some of the things here that I can point out, you're going to differentiate that, you know, you're going to really differentiate yourself from the competition because it is, again, a very robust process that people just don't go through, you know, lightheartedly, right? So you just going through the process and, and showing your professionalism is going to take you a long way. You can command higher premium fees because of your certification and you're going to be able to attract those, those top tier clients, as I mentioned. One thing to point out here, the, the, that the CMC designation signifies your commitment to excellence and professionalism. The, this, the consulting framework that IFC USA and, and CMC Global Institute provides for you. And that, that is what we as IFC USA members abide by, right? And this, this framework really shows that we're not just a, we're not just a consultant by name, right? We are actually professionals that are, that are doing this as a significant part of the work that we do in our, in our lives, right? It's our livelihood. It also binds us to an ethical framework as well, right? So we have a very robust and, and enforceable code of ethics that is a huge differentiator. I believe I talked about that on, on one of the upcoming slides as well. So you're going to grab by, by going through all the education that IFC USA offers, right? You're going to gain deeper knowledge and expertise. We provide through, through Quick Start, all the way MMC and, and ISO, ISO twenty seven hundred. You're going to have a comprehensive understanding of management consulting, the core competencies you need, core competencies you need, best practices and the ethical framework, like I mentioned. And then earning that CMC designation validates all of this. It validates your, your in-depth knowledge and reinforces your ability to deliver on the consulting services that you've advertised. You're going to gain the trust of the consulting community as well as your clients. So our reputation for excellence is recognized by businesses worldwide. And the designation signifies our adherence to that ethical code of ethics and our professional conduct. Which just again, it begets trust. People who, people are going to do business with people that they know, like and trust. And that designation with this education really goes a long way to doing that. And you're not just using a random set of tools, right? We actually provide through the programs proven methodologies and tools, including, I, I know, again, I have this toolkit from Quick Start that I keep in my Google Drive that I can, I can pull whenever I need to. And that framework really helps me to make sure that from a quality standpoint, I can deliver the same type of service at the same level every time that I engage with a new client. And, or even an existing client on a new project, right? So CMC credentials consultants are known for their ability to solve complex problems and deliver tangible results. I thought I would include in this presentation, something from the last presentation, which is the spectrum of management consultants, because oftentimes what happens is we, we go, oh, I'm, I'm, I'm in, I work for a company. I, I, none of this pertains to me. And the reality is that the CMC Global Institute or ICMCI defines management consultant as one who works alone as a singleton in their own practice. Works as a partner or an employee of a practice or firm, but also works as an internal consultant in an organization or governmental body whose primary purpose is not management consultancy. So we have the independent, single consultant, a consultant that is within a firm. You know, any of the, any of the bigger or more boutique firms that are out there, but you can be an internal consultant when you are interfacing with and advising management and influencing the way a, an organization operates. You are working as an internal consultant and also qualify for this education and for certification. And then just a little bit more about what the CMC is. So it's not just book learning. It's not a certificate, certification that you can just purchase, right? Certification is earned by your efforts and experience and it's measured against an internationally recognized set of standards. It's proof of your successful consulting, the, the knowledge of your successful consulting methodology and it's proof of satisfied clients. Again, those clients can be in clients that are internal to an organization. But you need to say, you need to be able to provide evidence that you have a consulting methodology that works for you and that you have satisfied clients. It also provides proof of a superior level of knowledge and professionalism that meets or exceeds the IFC competence framework and that you understand the common body of knowledge for IFC USA and, and the CMC. And with that, let's take, let's pause here because I do have some other resources that I'll, that I can share, but I'm gonna exit my screen here. And I am going to open up the floor for any questions, comments, concerns, or what, what do you, what do you got for me today? Does, does all of this resonate with anybody? Mr. Lundie.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that when you brought up the cut, the point that it's not just your academic background, like, like books and academia, but it's about your experience. And one thing I want to point out is that when you get certified, the whole process of getting certified with all the information that you put forward is almost like building up a high profile on LinkedIn or a website because it really has you focus on your professionalism as an independent consultant. I don't care whether you're in a, a a company or a solo, like we brought this three types of environments. And so the focus is basically on, on you, the consultant, and you kind of get away from that, that bubble of a, of a corporation and just say, well, what do I have to offer as an independent? That's really what we focus on at IMC USA.
Perfect. Yep. Yeah, historically, there have been some requirements for specific education, you know, educational requirements collegiate, or, or your college requirements, but that has changed as of twenty twenty one, is that right? Yeah. When that changed.
The coursework that IMC offers through Global CMC and of course our own fills in a lot of blanks. And so we put a lot of emphasis on the experience on continuing education. Even without a college degree, someone can qualify through the managing and mastering management consulting from Lauren Huckler's class. So we have ways to keep the quality high and not dummy it down at all. Just because it depends on the consultant's experience and their level of training and, and in academic work, if it applies. And I think that's one thing that, that David brought out, what ISO twenty seven hundred is, is a training program. And that's also very effective in putting in your app as a, as a qualified way to achieve the educational requirements. So we are broadening our scope, I, I would say, on what, what type of academic learning and, and training and conferences and webinars, it helps build up the knowledge base for the consultant.
Sure, sure. Bilal?
Hi, you, you, you pronounced it perfectly.
Oh, great. Thank you.
So my question is, you referred to a framework.
Yes.
And yet you refer to also our unique methodologies. Can you elaborate and clarify that? I mean, is it that we can still use our own methodologies? And how would that fit within the framework that you referred to? Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question. I, I'll take a stab at this first, then David and Greg, if you want to, if you have anything to add, but that you are not being judged, or let me put it this way, you're not being measured by the, you know, any specific method that you use for your consulting. You're, you, you can use a variety of different methodologies. We, the, there is a, there is a competence framework that IFC USA has, but it's not necessarily telling you like this, this is the sequence that you need to use. This is how exactly you need to contract and all of that. So it's you, you certainly can make it your own. And the, the Quick Start Program does provide and ISO twenty seven hundred as well, they, they do provide some methodologies for you to use, but the you, you're not, you're not restricted to that, if that makes sense.
I mean, Rich, Paul, as, as an example, I'm fond of saying, I don't care, and this is not a majority, but I don't care what you consult in or your methodologies. I care how you consult. The competence framework that Rich just referenced and that our certification chair helps measure your performance against is how you consult, how you do project management, how, how you behave yourself, how, how you treat clients. And it's those parts of your practice that we tend to put as practicing consultants, we put under the covers and we don't feature them. And as an example, if the theme, as the theme today is about differentiation, one of the things as an example that the CMC offers you, once you acquire it, is that you've been vetted, as it were, there was that man over there, Greg Lundie helps vet you, vet your practice, but not on what you consult in, but how you consult. If that makes sense. So the methodologies that you bring and your practices, good. I hope you do. It's about how you are a consultant, though. If that, does that help frame it for you?
Yeah, I think, um, is it like, could we say it's more like the customer experience with me to some extent?
It includes the customer experience because part of what you're doing in the application process is actually sharing some case examples that will vet. But again, we're vetting again, how you perform as a consultant, not what you consult in.
Yeah, I might give an example. My methodology is copyrighted and trademarked. And so when I look at the framework that we're looking for to examine, it's like, how do you apply that as a solo practitioner? You tell us how you do it, as Dave said. And that's really a, a practice of a, of an objective nature. When we ask you how you deal with customer service, for example, in an ethical manner, then you can expound on that based on your methodology and your experience.
One, one more, just another one, one quick slice of it. On this call alone, there's international consultants, there are HR consultants, there are marketing consultants, there are IT consultants. That's okay. That diversity is great. But the commonality is we want you all to be professional in how you consult.
Thank you.
Would it be helpful if I, I, I had, I did actually have a couple of slides that I didn't go through, but I could, I could just show a couple of slides that might help a little bit on that. Let me just go back here. All right. So just to highlight something, so CMS, the CMC is mentioned on several important websites, including ONET, which is ONET Online is a list of all the different types of occupations that are out there. And it's very much in line with what you see at BLS, the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which also mentions the CMC. If you look under certifications related to management analysts, you won't find consultants according to the government, but you will find management analyst falls under that. But the CMC is a certification found on ONET, BLS. It's also referenced in HubSpot indeed, and the predictive index, among other places, but I, I just thought I'd point that out. So as I mentioned, there's a, there is this code of ethics. Um, and all this is public. Is provided on the IFC USA website, but uh, the others, there's fifteen points in three groups. Uh, my commitment to my clients, my commitment to fiscal integrity, and my commitment to the public and to uh, the profession. Right? So that the, the, the code of ethics is something that um, you should, as, if you're going for certification, you should understand and be able to answer uh, that, but uh, uh, IMC USA uh, members are also um, guided by this uh, this code of ethics. Uh, there's the code of professional conduct, which if I'm not mistaken, that was also part of the twenty-twenty-one revision. And really includes the five main parts of responsibility are to the client, to society, to the organization for which we work, to those uh, with whom we work within those organizations and the consultancy profession itself. Um, so, yep.
So, so consider for a minute and if as you are a consultant, and it is estimated by BLS was one of them, and Ibis World is another. There are estimated two million consultants in the US today. That's your competition, folks. Now, how you separate yourself, differentiate yourself from that is, and, and as Rich has already presented, there are three ways. Get certified, therefore you are independently vetted against your performance. It's a good housekeeping seal of approval, as it were. Two, if you join IMC, you would automatically adhere to a code of ethics. I encourage everybody to put that in proposals or letters of intent or your collateral material, and I'll come back to that. And then thirdly, now there's a professional code of conduct. I share with my prospects a simple one. Consider what the power of this says, though. As a prospective purchaser of consulting services, you have the absolute right to hire whoever you want that you think best fits your needs. I would encourage you, moreover, to consider hiring those that have been vetted to international standards. Those adhere to an enforceable code of ethics and adhere to a professional code of conduct. Now, how does that? Question to all of you on the, on the call today, how does that separate me from two million other folks?
Okay.
That to me is the key of differentiation, and nowhere in that description did I say what I do.
Yep, yep. And to uh, to go a step further on that, you'll see um, the competence framework here. Right? Which was rearranged again in twenty-twenty-one a little bit. But the, the framework says, you know, we have business aptitude, uh, insights and aptitude, practice capabilities, consultative behavior, and ethics and professional conduct. It does not here say anything specifically about how you engage the client and how you uh, how you manage your consultancy, because as Mr. Lundey pointed out, the way that he does this is his own IP, right? It's, it's your own um, uh, way of doing things, it's your own value prop. Great, uh, I think that's what I got right now. Oops, hold on. Stop that share. There we go. Now you got a good glimpse of the my, my desktop full of stuff. So anyway, uh, does anybody have any other questions?
I had a couple clarification questions.
Sure, Laura, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Laura. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you too.
So um, just one question, kind of why I was interested in the Zoom. So I graduated with my DO degree as a physician, but I haven't uh, done residency yet. So I was kind of told that um, there are options in terms of medical consulting or just consulting in general. So my question is, um, how long does it take to become a consultant?
So that's good, that's a great question. Um, so to become certified, it's uh, without, without, it's three years, right? Three years of practice with uh, with a degree, five years without. Is that right, Mr. Lundey?
Yeah. So Laura, now how, how long have you been out? Have you done any practicing, part-time work, whatever?
Uh, I just graduated, so I'll have kind of a gap year in between uh, applying and getting into residency to start twenty-twenty-five.
Sure, now.
Yeah, there's nothing stopping, there's nothing stopping a consultant at any level to, to join IMC. It's out the ticker, right? Start the clock going at that point. So exactly, for example, you join IMC now. Then as you go along with your experience and your continuing education, et cetera, and attending our webinars. Um, then when it comes time where you feel comfortable to just send, send in the app, application to become certified, you can do that. You have a lot of help. Have a lot of insight from other consultants who are in IMC to help you along that path. And so I guess the sooner you start, the better. Now, when I started, you could not take the uh, IMC certified uh, management consultant exam until after you'd been consulted for three years. Now, that's basically the, the, the way to do it. And so that doesn't keep you from, you can, you can consult today and, and start the table, David.
Okay, let, let me go um, to specifically answer your question. And, and I'm gonna look at a couple of the professions for a minute, medical being one. Uh, medical attorneys, uh, architects, accountants, you name it. Almost every single one of those professions, you have to be licensed at the state level.
Right.
And you will ultimately be, congratulations, licensed, if you're not already. Um, management consulting is probably the largest profession in the US that is not regulated or licensed. In North Carolina, where I am, even cosmetologists and barbers have to be licensed. But consultants who deal with the future of the company, their client doesn't have to be. So back to your question, how long does it take to be a consultant? Normally, you can put a shingle on the wall and say, I are one.
Right.
Okay, and that, that's your right, you're privileged. We want you all to step up to another level, to the professional level. And in your case, it's gonna take a couple of years for you to get some experience. Okay, just like doing your residency or anything else, there's gonna be some years in there where you're gonna have to do some things, so uh, welcome. Would be the other way to say it. And I appreciate your questions. So yes, you could hang a shingle tomorrow.
So then are there any like introductory courses before we start consulting?
There you go. That's what I was gonna say. So you know, I, I had been consulting myself, um, was it since two thousand five, after I got my MBA, uh, and I didn't have, I didn't have a framework or anything like that that I was working with. Um, it wasn't until I went and found uh, IMC try, IMC USA trying to up my game, right, as, as a consultant, um, that I found the Quick Start program. Um, I didn't really fully, well, I had investigated the CMC, but I was really more interested at the time in building that competency. So there are no, as far as I know, I don't think there's any prereqs to um, Quick Start or uh, MMC and certainly not for ISO twenty-seven hundred. So any of those are uh, fair game and available to you to to, to grow the, the, your, your skills, you know, and the knowledge and skills to do it.
It's called the Quick Start program, you said?
Yep, Quick Start.
Okay.
And as a member of IMC, we share with every CMC the fact that we are obliged to follow the code of ethics. So that's the main reason why. Does it, we have a student rate, you can join IMC as a student, you can join as a professional or a straight member, and then start counting up your, your hours and your time and your classwork and your experiences and and your positions, you know, that you take on a professional level.
For sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Great question. Anybody else have any questions?
I see one of our newer CMCs on, but I don't wanna call on her unless she's active. Ask her why she got her CMC. And you know, there you go.
Hi, hi.
Hi, April.
Hey, April.
I'm April. I recently got my CMC. It's been a year as a CMC and I'm very excited. I'm, I'm tracking uh, all my points for the three years recertification. So uh, that's, that's just another way to make sure you're on top of all your uh, consulting excellence, you know. I'm still attending all the conferences, I'm, I'm attending all those ethics hours. Um, and so I'm trying to uh, actively participate um, at all the conferences I can find. And my experience was um, my boss was a CMC, so he recommended doing the course and, and pursuing it. So it took a couple of years to to complete it all, but overall it was a great experience and the oral examination panel uh, was a great group of panelists and overall, great experience. So I, I definitely recommend it for anyone that wants to be at that gold standard of consulting.
Right. Greg?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to follow up with April said, and she may have something else to say about it, but she's within a consulting company. So that's a good example. The one question we had at that other level, you're solo, you work with us or you're in a company. And April comes into that environment, and so many consultants are in that environment as internal um, and employee types of positions within a, a larger firm. So that pretty fits into that third category uh, with her company.
Good. Does anybody have any other questions? If not, I do have um, one more slide that I was going to that I was gonna show here. Just get that up and running here. Went all the way to the beginning. Hold on, folks. There we go. That's what I wanted to show. So uh, um, these are a bunch of links and um, they will be provided to you uh, in the, in the recorder, of course, you'll, you'll see these, but uh, we have a point calculator um, online. We have a uh, the competence framework. You can visit the CMC Global website. That's uh, at CMC-global.org. Um, our code of ethics, so everything is very transparent and everything is very accessible at IFCUSA.org. That's the, that's the website of uh, the US uh, uh, IMC. The code of content, it's code of conduct, I'm sorry, is also available. Um, and all of our courses are available at IFCUSA.org slash education, where you'll find information on uh, any of the uh, any of the courses that we offer and um, upcoming trainings. And with that.
A question, Rich, a question came up on chat about the presentation you shared.
Sorry. Hold on one second, I need to pull up the pull up the chat there. Uh, there will be a, there will be a recording available, yes, for sure. No problem, Kevin. Run it. So uh, with that, we want to thank everybody for for joining us.
Real quickly, Laura has two questions. I think you can answer them both.
Oh, sorry. On average, how long does it take to complete the Quick Start program? That's a good question. I think it is a six, six week program. I'm not sure. Um, it, it is, it is detailed on the website and our uh, our chair, Lorraine Huckler um, can answer any questions. So if you, if you um, if you even email me, you can email me at, I'll put this in the chat too. Rich at greaterchicagoconsulting.com. Or go to the IFCUSA uh, dot org website. And uh, you could submit a form, uh, yeah, you could submit a question to our forums on the website as well. And what was the second one? Uh, yeah, I'm providing our email. So that's my personal email there. Um, Pam, what's the best email for IMC USA? Would that be the info at, or is there a, another one? I'm not sure if we still have Pam on the line. But uh, I, I believe there's um, info at IMCUSA.org, I believe works. Uh, but if you have any questions, again, I'm at rich@greaterchicagoconsulting.com. And I'm happy to relay any questions you may have going forward. All right. Well, thank you.
I don't know if I, I'd talk to anybody. If you got questions.
David, David is certainly willing to talk, for sure. Great. Okay, well, thank you all very much for showing up this afternoon. We really appreciate it. Um, uh, again, visit us at IFCUSA.org slash education for any of those education programs. And feel free to drop a line to us with any questions regarding certification. All right. Thanks a million. See you all later.
Have a good day.
Take care. Bye bye. Thanks for your questions.